Having the appointed time of 5:30 arrived, I'd like to call the February, or Tuesday, February 26, 2019 Committee, uh, meeting minutes. I understand we have a scout in the audience. David, would you like to come up and, uh, lead us in the pledge allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Will do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Sinore.
Here.
Alderwoman Turner. Alderman Fulgenzie.
Here.
Alderman Proctor.
Here.
Alderwoman DeSenzo.
Present.
Alderman McMiniman.
Here.
Alderman Tylin.
Here.
Alderman Donilon.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, a quorum is present.
All right, thank you, Clerk. Uh, and accept a motion for approval of the February 13th, 2019 Committee, uh, meeting minutes.
Second.
Uh, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Say none. Motion passes. Uh, no need for a treasurer's report today, and no need for an OBM contri report today. Uh, I think we'll do the inspector general first, if that's okay, because I understand he charges by the hour, so.
You're the chairman.
Yeah, well, all right. Uh, Judge Holmes, if you'd come forward, please.
Thank you, Chairman Proctor, members of the City Council, Mayor Langfelder, Corporation Council, and other elected officials. Have a few opening remarks before I present my reports. This is the first mayoral or municipal election in which there has been an active inspector general. Hillard Heinz, the corporate inspector general, may have been in place in the 2015 election cycle, but having reviewed their reports, I found none that were involved in elections. When I was appointed to this position, I pledged to you my independence, my neutrality, and my integrity. I take pride in maintaining those pledges to you and remind you that the ordinance which you passed creating the office of inspector general allows that the inspector general may not participate in partisan politics in any fashion. I cannot attend fundraisers, I cannot campaign, I cannot contribute, I can vote. Likewise, in my role as a hearing officer for the State Board of Election, I have the same constraints, so I am not a person who is involved in politics. As I report to you tonight, I recall the experience I had on the bench when someone said, "It's a tough job, half the people you see go away disappointed." I agreed until I thought about it more. Most of the people went away disappointed because rarely did everybody get everything that they wanted. So I call upon that, uh, as we move forward tonight. I embark upon tonight's reports, knowing that the office of inspector general is breaking new ground in dealing with election matters, and I do so not only to bring resolution to the matters before us tonight, but to set a precedent for those who will follow me in the position of inspector general. So, onto the reports. I have three. The first is 2018 OIG 17, the last case that I, uh, opened in 2018. On November 18th, 2018, I received a complaint from an alderman that a member of the city administration had gone to the city clerk to review the alderman's nominating petitions. Additionally, the alderman complained that the same administration member's spouse had passed petitions for the alderman's opponent, and finally received information that the alderman's opponent's son was recently hired by CWLP as an outside janitor. I'll address those briefly in order. Nominating petitions for city elective office are filed with the office of city clerk and are public records, open to review by any person. The city clerk does not require that a person seeking to review nominating petitions state a purpose for that review, nor even state their name. City clerk therefore does not keep a record of who examined nominating petitions, therefore there is nothing for me to investigate. As to the allegation that the administration member's husband, uh, passed petitions for the alderman's opponent, that issue depends on whether or not the spouse was a city employee. Uh, Section 36.07a3 of the City Code states, "No city officer or employee shall engage in any po- any political activity while performing official duties or during work hours." It has been determined that the administration member's spouse is not a city employee, therefore there is no legal impropriety in the spouse passing nominating petitions. As to the remaining allegation of the opponent's son being employed by the city, I requested an in-depth review by City Human Resources, which disclosed that the opponent's son applied for CWLP's security job position in January 2017 and was not hired. The person was hired as a temporary worker for seven weeks in the summer of 2017 at Oak Ridge Cemetery, and again in the summer of 2018 as a temporary, whose service ended October 6, 2018. During the two summers of temporary service at Oak Ridge, the person was paid $11 per hour, inasmuch as the person's temporary hiring in the summers of 2017 and 18 occurred far in advance of the filing period for the municipal election. I found no nexus between the summer employment and the alderman's opponent filing for elective office. Additionally, the allegation of opponent's son, uh, having just been hired by CWLP turned out to be incorrect. Inasmuch as I have found no violation of the City Code, any remaining issues are matters of politics, which do not come within the purview of the inspector general's role, and therefore this matter is concluded with no further action. My next report is in 2019 OIG 1. I was contacted on February 4, 2019, by a complainant who stated that a number of City of Springfield employees appeared on a campaign Facebook page for a candidate for elective office in the upcoming municipal election. I viewed the candidate's Facebook page, which clearly stated that it was a page in support of that person's candidacy, and contained numerous photos showing campaign activities, as well as general activities within the relevant political subdivision. Among the photos were at least five city employees that were either photographed with city equipment, such as a police car or fire truck, or clearly within a city building during operating hours. Several other employees were pictured at a public event, which they attended in their official capacities, one in uniform. Again, 36.07a3, "No city officer or employee shall engage in any political activity while performing official doodles- duties or during work hours." I investigated the circumstances of each photograph appearing on the campaign Facebook page, and spiked spoke either with the person photographed or their supervisor. In each instance, I was assured by the employer supervisor that they had not given consent for their image to appear on a political Facebook page. I sought to corroborate this unanimous response by speaking with the candidate in question, sending an email at the candidate's request, and speaking with the candidate's attorney. In my email, I asked if the candidate had any information to show that any of the photos were posted voluntarily and knowingly by the employees. Uh, while I had productive conversation with the candidate's attorney, at no time did the candidate or her attorney answer the question about employee consent. Following discussion with the candidate's attorney, the candidate voluntarily removed the photos in question from the campaign Facebook page, and I have confirmed that the photos no longer appear. In light of the fact that I found no evidence that any of the city employees who appeared on the Facebook page had any knowledge that their photo would be used for campaign purposes, uh, I do not find, uh, that there is any, uh, knowing violation of that section, and I made no disciplinary referrals to Human Resources. I do have two recommendations. Uh, the first I have cleared with HR Director Kuzin, because I'm placing a burden upon his office. Uh, one, that the City Human Resources Department send an email to all employees with the full text of Section 3607, which provides for prohibited and allowed campaign activities by city employees, to remind them during this election cycle. And number two, I further recommend that all candidates for municipal office review their social media campaign sites, to be sure that they do not contain any depiction of city employees taken during work hours with or in city-owned property, or while performing official duties at any time. Finally, I report to you tonight on 2019 OIG 2. While it is my practice not to disclose the name of any complainant, and not to disclose the name of any respondent, unless respondent is referred for prosecution, due to the fact that the subject matter of this investigation has already been fully presented in the local media, and because the circumstances which gave rise to the matter in question occurred during open meetings of this council, I will deviate from that standard for this report On February 13, 2019, a special meeting of the City Council, uh, was duly convened with, to discuss an ordinance which was the primary topic of the special session. Later, an ordinance was presented to be placed on the following week's agenda of the regular meeting of the City Council. The resolution in question involved transferring jurisdiction of MacArthur, uh, south of Wabash, uh, and Alderman Joe McMiniman's ward includes MacArthur north of Wabash. Alderman Kristen DeSenzo's, uh, ward is the, is MacArthur south of Wabash. Uh, Mr. Alderman McMiniman spoke in opposition to transferring jurisdiction. I have a partial transcript from the videotape that appears on YouTube, uh, just to give a little bit of background, and I will skim that for you and recommend it for your later At 14.56 minutes into the meeting, Alderman McMiniman began a discussion regarding the, uh, transfer jurisdiction issue. Uh, at 15.15, he stated, "I attended the MBA, which is MacArthur Boulevard Association Board Meeting roughly two weeks ago," and, uh, stated that they would be opposed to the transfer. Uh, at 17.52, Alderman McMiniman, uh, stated that the Wannless Trust beneficiaries who have an interest in, in, uh, the city taking over that section, uh, reside outside the City of Springfield. Alderman DeSenzo stated, "What does that have to do with anything? They want development." Uh, McMiniman, what I'm trying to say, excuse me, you are interrupting. I think we want to say his local residents want to have a say. Uh, he concludes, uh, that portion that he, of his remarks, uh, he encourages Alderman DeSenzo to attend the MBA meeting. She states, "You barged in on their meeting, you were not invited." Alderman McMiniman, "I absolutely was invited." Uh, Alderman DeSenzo, "That's not what the president told me twice today." Uh, then, uh, at 18.48, um, Alderman McMiniman says, "I still have the floor because I was interrupted by a false statement." Uh, Alderman DeSenzo, "Call him right now." Alderman McMiniman, he is in an event right now. Alderman DeSenzo, "I talked to him twice today." Again, at 19.44, Alderman McMiniman talks about being at the meeting. Alderman DeSenzo says, "You were the only one there." Uh, McMiniman, "Excuse me, ma'am, you are interrupting again." At 20.25, Alderman DeSenzo, uh, makes remarks saying, "I was not at the meeting because I was not invited," nor was Alderman McMiniman. Uh, McMiniman, uh, states that's a false statement. So that's the gist of what occurred that evening, which gave rise the next morning to the exchange that has generated this report. Uh, on February 14th, 2019, at 11:15 a.m., the day following the special meeting, Alderman McMiniman sent an email to City Council Coordinator Tim Griffin with the subject, quote, "False statements last night at City Council's special meeting for a jurisdictional transfer of South MacArthur," close quote. The text of the email, uh, briefly is, "Tim, here below is an email reminder I received from Jess Weitzel, Secretary of MBA, reminding me of the February 1st meeting, and that the topic is jurisdictional transfer. Last night, Ward 6 alderperson DeSenzo, uh, said that I barged into an MBA meeting uninvited and discussed a topic that was not on the agenda, those statements were false and untrue. Michael Higgins was also mentioned last night. Below is a letter of endorsement he gave me at the MacArthur Boulevard General Membership Meeting this morning. Please distribute this email with attachments to the City Council, the mayor, the city clerk, the city treasurer, Bonnie Drew, Corporation Council's Urkel, and Julia Frevert. Thank you, Joe McMiniman." Attached to the email, uh, was an email dated January 13, 2019, from Jess Weitzel to Alderman McMiniman regarding reminder about board meeting this Friday. Bonnie, the email was a reminder, and states, "The board knows you will be coming to discuss the proposed JT of South MacArthur." Also attached to Alderman McMiniman's email is a letter of endorsement from Michael F. Higgins, resident of Ward 7 on Maldonner's Restaurant Letterhead, dated February 13, 2019. At 1:12 p.m. on February 14th, 2019, Aldermanic Coordinator Griffin distributed the McMiniman email as directed. Uh, thereafter, eight minutes later, at 1:20 p.m., Alderman DeSenzo emailed Coordinator Griffin, "Tim, please let the council know that, one, Chef Higgins, President of MBA, told me the exact opposite, and, two, MBA doesn't endorse candidates. Anything written by Chef Higgins is on his own personal endorsement." Seven minutes later, at 1:27 p.m., City Council Coordinator distributed Alderman DeSenzo's email to the City Council members and the other recipients who were copied on the McMiniman email. At 3:11 on February 14th, another alderman sent an email which began, began with the words, "Good afternoon, all." It does not disclose the recipient list. That email ends with the request that the mayor and Corporation Council initiate an inspector general inquiry regarding the endorsement letter attached. I am going to make an aside here. Uh, the inspector general is totally, totally independent from all members of city government, so you don't need to go through the mayor or Corporation Council to ask me to, uh, initiate an investigation. All members of the public, all members of this council can contact me directly, and, and, uh, while the mayor and Mr. Urkel have also requested investigations, such as the police interrogation camera issue of a year or so ago, uh, you do not have to go through them to contact me. All right, back to the report. Uh, at 3:29 p.m., yet another alderman emailed all of the City Council members in the same parties who received the initial email, uh, concurring with the first alderman. Finally, at 5:15 on February 14th, I received a request from the first alderman, asking me to investigate the McMiniman attachment of a political endorsement as engaging in political activity on city time utilizing city resources. Again, we revisit Section 36.07a3 of the City Code. "No city officer or employee shall engage in any political activity while performing official duties or during work hours." As can be seen by the official transcript, uh, part, I'm sorry, the unofficial, partial transcript above, on at least four occasions, Alderman McMiniman stated that he invited to, and did attend the MacArthur Boulevard Association wherein the jurisdictional transfer was discussed. On at least four occasions, Alderman DeSenzo states that Alderman McMiniman's statements are false, and that he was not invited to the meeting and barged in, and goes on to say that he was the only one at the meeting. There was also a heated exchange as to the position of MBA President Michael Higgins. Under the City Code ordinance creating the office of inspector general, there's a provision that a respondent in an invest- in a case, in this case Alderman McMiniman, be afforded the opportunity to state defense to any matter being investigated by the inspector general. I afforded Alderman McMiniman this opportunity by way of a telephone call. He indicated that he sent the email of February 14th to the City Council Coordinator Griffin, uh, to be distributed to all the aldermen and the other named recipients, to refute Alderman DeSenzo's false accusations that he was not invited to the meeting by attaching a copy of the email invitation. Uh, additionally, Alderman McMiniman attached the endorsement letter from Michael Higgins, uh, to refute Alderman DeSenzo's statements that she had been in communication with Michael Higgins, who told her positions which were contrary to what Alderman McMiniman stated at the special City Council meeting. To the extent that the McMiniman email attached the MBA board, uh, invitation, uh, that was a proper response to allegations levied against him, and he is entitled to the opportunity to prove the allegations against him, uh, that, yet by his allegations were false. Where the email becomes problematic is the point at which Alderman McMiniman attached a political endorsement to an email circulated by the city coordinator. First, statements appearing in the press indicated that the City Council Coordinator may have a duty to review and censor any email he has requested to send. To the contrary, the City Council Coordinator is obliged to forward anything he has directed to distribute to the City Council members. City Council Coordinator is a conduit, and neither the censor nor the conscious of emails that he has directed to distribute, and therefore has no fault in this matter. The culpability of Alderman McMiniman depends on the interpretation of the words "political activity" appearing in Section 3607 of the City Code. Historically, countless government bodies have had issues with improper political, yeah, political activities, such as a manager demanding that employees sell fundraising tickets, make contributions to a particular candidate, campaign on behalf of a candidate, use government resources to campaign on behalf of a candidate, or use paid governmental time for campaign activities, all of which seek to influence the outcome of an election. To curb these former abuses, governmental bodies have enacted statutes and ordinance, much like the City of Springfield, to eliminate political activity from the workplace, while granting employees the ability to engage in political activities on their own time. The applicability of the term, quote, "political activity" to this case turns upon the intent of the sender, Alderman McMiniman. If the intent of a political activity is to influence a person to vote for a particular candidate, then his action falls short, since none of the aldermen can vote in the Ward 7 election. As well, all but one of the other recipients live outside of Ward 7, so this was not an attempt to influence the vote for Alderman McMiniman. While I do not view the attachment of the Higgins endorsement to be political activity, but instead was sent to refute claims made against the alderman at a previous meeting, I do find that the inclusion of the endorsement should have been given much greater thought by Alderman McMiniman, and deleted prior to forwarding his email, so that the ensuing controversy could have been, uh, proof, uh, would not have occurred. This unfortunate incident is a product of current society's reliance upon instantaneous communication by email and other electronic media. Such communications are often regretted when made in the heat of passion. Uh, the entire controversy moved from start to finish in less than six hours, sometimes separated emails by mere minutes, uh, and should be a reminder to all to leave time to reflect upon what one has written or attached before hitting the send button. Based upon my investigation of this matter, and by finding that the endorsement was not attached as political activity, this matter is closed with the following recommendations. In the heart of this election season, and at all times, aldermen are expected to zealously represent their constituents, but such zealous representation should not occur at the expense of courtesy to fellow aldermen. Measured and thoughtful debate of matters before this body will not only enhance its efficiency, it can also enhance the image of this body in the eyes of the citizens you represent. Second, uh, recommendation is just a reminder that those that want to reach all of the Aldermanic, uh, members of the council should only do so through the Alderman, Aldermanic, uh, Coordinator, Mr. Griffin. That is the conclusion of my reports for this evening.
All right, thank you. Uh, any questions? Alderman Redpath.
I have just a statement, and I think this is a point of order by Corp- for Corporation Council, that in the future, I think that, that before the, in the, the council coordinator is, is subjected to ten, ten bosses. We, he all works for us. So when one person gives a, a, a letter of that type, it's, it's, it really needs to be reviewed, and before he sends it out, and I think he's gonna do this in the future, but I don't know if we need an ordinance, or how we gotta do it, Corporation Council, but we have to give him some cover that he has an op- he, he has the right and, uh, the ability to contact you for review if there's a question on any kind of, any kind of, uh, email, or any kind of distribution that we make, be it political, or be it any other thing that he feels there's a controversy for.
Any other questions?
Did, so, do we need to draft some type of ordinance, or, or do we just?
Um, if you'd allow me, I will talk to the council coordinator, and maybe he and I can discuss, um, what, what if anything is necessary by way of official, uh, action.
It's, it's, the City Council should not be putting the Corporation, our, uh, council coordinator in that kind of position, and I, I don't know that Alderman McMiniman did it intentionally to, to, for whatever reason, but we, we all have an obligation to protect our Corporation, I mean, our City Council Coordinator, and that's important here, and I wanna make sure that we're following all, all the rules.
Any other questions? Alderman McMiniman.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Inspector General, for this report. I think you, uh, gave a careful analysis of the, uh, facts and the issues. Your second recommendation states, "The Aldermanic Coordinator is the proper channel to distribute emails to all the aldermen, rather than an alderman sending a, uh, e- a blast email to the other alderman." Are you suggesting there that there was a potential violation of the Open Meetings Act when two aldermen, uh, were writing to a quorum of other aldermen directly, and conferring about what, um, action they think should be taken against, in this case, myself? Is it an Open Meetings Act, uh, potential violation that you're referring to there?
It's merely offered as a reminder that good practice would be to send such an email through the Aldermanic Coordinator, and, and I read nothing more than that into it at this point.
And furthermore, uh, excuse me, are you finished? Joe?
Go ahead, Alderman Redpath.
Furthermore, um, in order to be a violation of Open Meetings Act, it has to be a, a, uh, item that we're discussing at City Council for approval or, or vote. So if people responded on this thing as a matter of quar- a, a matter of, of order, uh, we weren't gonna be voting on. to be voting on something that we were, we were asking about. This was about an allegation based on was, was there a violation of political activity on city time? So that's, that's the point that, that I think needs to be addressed.
I, I disagree. I think that what was being discussed by two Aldermen to a quorum of other Aldermen was very definitely city business. It had to do with what took place here at the city council, right here at the horseshoe. So that was city business and it was a discussion of what action certain Aldermen wanted to take against another Aldermen pertaining to a discussion that took place here at the horseshoe. So I think it was city business.
Well, once again, you're wrong. I, I already had it researched and I already got, I already got counsel involved in this and we did the research and found out that since it was not an issue that we were talking about, that we weren't in violation of Open Meetings Act.
Okay, any, do you want?
Yeah, with all due respect, I mention it only so as not to create any appearance. I, I exist under a code to avoid the appearance of any impropriety and proactive is better than reactive, so I, I mention it only as a recommendation in that context.
Alderman Senor?
Just a question. Does an open meeting, does reading an email constitute an open meeting?
Inasmuch as I didn't include that in my investigation, I am not prepared to answer that question.
Very good, thank you.
It was not part of, part of the assignment that was forwarded to me.
Because in response to Alderman McMiniman, I think everybody may have read it, but everybody didn't respond to the email. So does, does reading and responding with that, and I guess, Mr. Zirkle, I'll direct my question to you. Does reading an email constitute a meeting and then does not responding, would that be part of, of, would that come a part of the Open Meeting Act if you don't respond, if you just read the, read the email?
I need to look at that and see what the cases say because I wasn't, as Judge Holmes indicated, I wasn't really thinking about that exact context. Can a telephone, you know, conference, you know, telephone conference where is the discussion of city business potentially constitute a meeting? Absolutely. Can an email exchange? I'm not sure, but I would be happy to look at what the cases say.
But, but please.
There may be an Attorney General's opinion on that. I'm not certain, but I'll check.
Please investigate, if you can investigate cutting off at reading versus reading and responding, because some of us read and didn't respond to the email.
Understood.
All right, thank you.
Alderman Tylen.
To build on what Alderman Senior said, one other question that I would add to that is the timing of when you read it. In my case, I didn't see any of these emails until after three o'clock. I would think, from just what I've looked into, I think it's a gray area because technically an Open Meetings Act means everyone's involved at the same time. So I think that when you're reading something, as Alderman Senior pointed out, he might read it at 10, Alderman Proctor might read it at 11, I read it at 3, Alderman DeSenzo at 4, may or may not see it till the next, next morning at 2 o'clock when he's reading the emails like he does. So, you know, the fact that none of us are reading it at the same time should come into play, in my opinion, because like you said, on the telephone conference, everybody's on there at the same time, but with the email, there's no way of showing who read what when.
And you're raising the issue of, does it have to be contemporaneous? You know, is it contemporary as to the exchange? So as I said, I would be happy to look at that and I think I understand the question, so I'll see what I can find on that.
But I agree with Alderman Senor.
Alderman Hanauer?
Yeah, I, I, Judge, if you could, I guess one of the problems that I have with this is so, so now, basically what you're saying is that a, that getting an endorsement is not considered political activity and, and if we send in our endorsements out to each other, it's not, it's not a political activity. I, I, I find that hard to believe. This was, to me, it was, I, as soon as I read the email, I contacted Mr. Griffin and said, listen, I want you to talk to Mr. Zirkle because I was concerned about him getting caught up in the whole, he was, he was put in a bad position is what he was, what he was. And I just, I, I really believe that putting an endorsement to, on an email, especially that went out to the press, is political activity. Because remember, it went to the press as well.
Before we got it.
And, 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 you know.
I was not aware of that.
And, and so, this was, to me, this was political activity from the standpoint, and I don't mean to, to disagree with you, but because the press got involved and because this was attached, it was just another way for this to get out to the press and, and to blow it up even, to, to make it bigger than it probably would have gotten had it just gone out on social media or something like that.
This is a factor I was not made aware of. Did the city council coordinator send it to the press?
No.
No.
All right, so, so city resources weren't used to send it to the press. The, what seemed to cause the problems for the Alderman who complained was that city resources were distributing campaign material in the context of Alderman McMiniman defending against what he felt were false accusations and against the context that it could not influence, of, of the persons who received that email from the city council coordinator, none of you can vote for Mr. McMiniman save one non-Aldermanic recipient. So it, it could not have been sent to cause you to vote for Mr. McMiniman, the recipients on that list. If it was independently sent to the press, that was not made known to me nor would it involve the misuse of city conduit in emailing it to the Aldermen. So I, I appreciate your concern and, and.
Anyone else? Alderman McMiniman.
Absolutely, I communicated with the press because my credibility and character had been questioned at city council and I communicated with members of the press that would have heard the exchange at the city council to clarify the record and let the record become known. So absolutely, I think any Alderman here would communicate with members of the press if their, if their honesty was called into question at a city council meeting by another Alderman.
Well, that's getting done quite, we, we've had it all, we've all had it happen by you, Joe, and we don't run to the press. So no, you're not, you're not correct on that.
Well, I, I would hope you would clarify something that was so extreme as what we heard, being interrupted four times at a city council meeting. I would hope you would clarify the record, Ralph, if it ever happens to you, and I think you'd be foolish if you did not.
Judge, do you have anything to say there? Okay, Alderman DeSenzo.
Alderman McMiniman, we've put this issue behind us, but you interrupt people frequently when they're speaking up here. So the assertion that, you know, you don't do that to other people is false. I was told one thing by one person and you were told another thing. So, you know, I, I'm not making up, how would I know anything about it? So there are two different stories being told here and I, I stand by the statements I made. What was told to me is, what was told to me is that you were not invited. Now, what I really care about is the outcome of what happened here. The truth was told to the MacArthur Boulevard Association. They took a proposition on something that you had convinced them to vote against and we have what we, what, the desired outcome, so.
Mr. Chair, no, Alderman Tylen.
I think the point here simply goes back to something that Alderman DeSenzo just said. The, the question comes around over what one person told two separate Aldermen, and I think something that would have been more germane to the discussion for me would have been a statement from that person saying either that this is what I told Alderman DeSenzo or this, I did invite Alderman McMiniman, whether it was officially or just as his capacity as a, as a board member. So I think that, for me, it would have been a lot better if Mr. Higgins had made a statement about the action and that would have been more germane to me to seeing what happened. But I'll be honest with you, like Alderman DeSenzo said, as far as I'm concerned, that vote's over. I understand what Alderman McMiniman is doing. If, if, if it were me, I'd probably be fighting just as hard and I, I understand that. But I think this all comes down to someone who's not here at this horseshoe, not out in the, in the crowd at the moment, and that person is the person who really truly needs to answer what's going on.
Mr. Chair.
I think it's important to recognize that we're discussing this today, tonight, not because Joe McMiniman wished it to be discussed, but because three Aldermen wished McMiniman to be investigated. That would be Alderman Person's DeSenzo, Alderman, Alderwoman Turner, and Alderman Redpath. I don't know what the other council members have to think about it, but I think since the discussion's taking place, I think it's important to state that what you think to be the facts, Alderman DeSenzo, is good enough. You can think whatever you want, but the facts are that, and as the Inspector General just disclosed tonight, I received an email in reminding me to attend the MBA meeting and you're, you're telling the whole public, the press, and other Aldermen that I was never invited to the meeting. So that's what I wish to clarify the record in public and I'm glad, ironically, to have had the opportunity, not because I brought this matter to the council tonight, but because three other Aldermen did.
But you took it to the press before you ever brought it to us.
I brought it simultaneously to the press and to Coordinator Griffin. That was a simultaneous email.
All right, I think we've had enough.
If, if, yeah, go ahead. Two, two brief responses, one to Alderman Hanauer. My jurisdiction would not apply to if Mr. McMiniman not using city resources sent an email to the press. That would be a matter of politics and as I indicated, Inspector General is not an arbiter of politics. So had it been sent through the government email, I would have included that in my investigation and would have rendered an opinion, but that's an activity outside of use of government resources. And I guess I thought long and hard about recommendation number one, about making the citizens you represent proud of the measured and thoughtful interaction that all of you have with one another to better the City of Springfield and to better the citizens' opinion of, of their elected public servants. And I would encourage you, if you read nothing else a second time, please read recommendation number one. I spent a lot of time and a lot of thought in making that observation.
Great. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you and good night.
Appreciate it. You have a good night. Thank you, Judge. All right, we have one more. We are pleased to have some international visitors with us tonight. Sorry to keep you holding there. This is Open World Ukraine, the S, Springfield Commission Visitor Bureau, Commission on International Visitors, Janet Kenny and, I want to butcher this, Spetlana, please come up.
Thank you. It's the Springfield Commission on International Visitors and the Open World U.S.-Ukraine Foundation. So we have six visitors from the Ukraine and we have an interpreter here from Chicago. They're here all week, they're staying with host families and it's a legislative education themed delegation. They're very happy to be here this evening and this is Spetlana Medford, the interpreter from Chicago.
It's very nice to meet you all and it's an honor for us, for our delegation to be present at such a highly ranked meeting and to be part of this meeting today. And I would like to speak on behalf of the delegation, if I may. They allowed me to do so. We are very glad to, the group is very happy to be invited to the country and to learn the experience of the United States in this sphere and they are hoping to take all the experience, all the knowledge that they obtain here on the program back to Ukraine with the purpose to implement it there, to make the life of people and the work of the system better in their home country.
So how can you learn the meaning to come up and introduce themselves?
Yes.
Real quick, one or two more.
Hello, I'm Eugene. I would like also to thank you for the opportunity to be here. I now work as a consultant for the Ukrainian government on secondary and higher education issues.
Thank you.
My name is Sergey Terentiev and I'm a principal of a private elementary school.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Antonsonenko. I'm a physicist from the Institute of Physics of National Academy of Science of Ukraine. Thanks.
Hello, my name is Andri. I am working for an NGO in Ukraine and I'm an joint activist and thank you for time. We had an opportunity to spend really great time in Springfield. Thank you very much.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kucherukurina. I'm a state expert in the Ministry of Health of Ukraine and I'm really glad to be here. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Alexandra Mushkutanya. I'm the facilitator of this fabulous group and we are really glad to be here and we are really glad to learn a lot and glad to do this cultural, to have this cultural experience. And so we have another few days to be here in Springfield and we have really great meetings with different people here. Thank you again and maybe we'll see you, some of you in our meetings. Thanks.
Thank you, welcome to Springfield.
Thank you.
They will be seeing some city officials in the morning, Director McCarty and Mayor Langfelder, and they frequently meet with city officials. They come, usually a delegation every year. We do appreciate everything the city does for them, so thank you.
Great. Thank you.
We should have our other two people come up and introduce themselves.
Joyce.
Yes, please. We need to know that you all are working and that you're working in your capacity. It's, it's very good that you all are doing this.
Please.
Well, Ronnie, Ronnie and I are both on the City Springfield Commission on International Visitors, so we're happy to be entertaining them and in my case, a facilitator staying at our home this week and I'm also going to be talking with them about our occupations and what I do as a lobbyist at the State Capitol on Friday, so it's, it's a pleasure. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Ms. Ronnie?
Hello, I'm Ronnie Mohan, also a member of the Commission on International Visitors. It's my pleasure, thank you mayor for appointing me. I just had my anniversary on the commission. So today I spent time with our delegation today at the Lincoln Magnet School, observing the technology training that the kids receive there. We moved on to Lincoln Land Community College and looked at the Workforce Development Center at the trade schools. And then we moved to UIS with Dr. Vicki Cook and visited the Center for Online Learning to see about online courses. So, pretty action-packed day today, full of information. Thank you.
Great, thank you much.
Before everybody disappears, I have to say Carol Circle's here too and she's also on the commission and has helped with the, the planning of meetings and coordinating and working as a liaison. She's sitting there quietly and won't get up here. But trust me, she's been a big asset, so thank you, Carol.
Great, thank you much. Appreciate it. All right, next we have ordinances tabled to remain in committee. Mr. Clerk, would you please read those ordinances?
2017-103, 2017-49, 2018-110, 2018-545, 2019-008, 2019-050, 2019-084.
Is there anyone, would you like to remove any of those ordinances for committee consideration? Yes, Alderman McMiniman.
Mr. Chair, 2019-084, it's a liquor license ordinance. Please move it to consideration for tonight.
You said what, 084?
084, it's a liquor license at the Hibachi on MacArthur Boulevard.
Second. All right, any discussion on favor? All right, move that, pull it out, we'll do it right now. Let's go ahead and do that one right now.
Okay, 2019-084, an ordinance to decrease the number of Class D liquor licenses by one for Hibachi Grill and Supreme Buffet Incorporated and increase the number of Class E liquor licenses by one for Hibachi Sushi Supreme Buffet LLC located at 2309 South MacArthur Boulevard.
Move to consent. This is a change of ownership situation which necessitated another liquor.
This is a change of ownership situation which necessitated another liquor license by the new owner.
Second.
You have a motion for consent and a second. Any discussion? Yes, Alderman Donilon.
Alderman, it's germane to the topic, not that it's specific ordinance, if that makes any sense, but it's related to the topic of liquor licenses tied to video gaming. I've asked on a couple of occasions for a report that would show the businesses that are required to have 60% of their sales to be non-gaming revenue. Ask for a report, and we haven't got anything. I just wanted to know what the status is, if, I don't know who to ask that question to.
Yeah. Who's that?
Director McCarty.
Director McCarty.
You've been nominated.
Yes, I've been nominated. I've had conversations.
After your last request, I did reach out to Todd Oliver, who does the licensing.
Sure.
And he, we had looked at it a couple a while ago, but I think he had determined that there wasn't a reason to do it. Can't remember exactly, but I'll tell you what I'll do. I'll reach out again, since I've been nominated, and see if I can get anything further.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, I'm not really looking for Todd Oliver, who is taxed extremely with duties to have extra duties, but the code is, we passed a few years ago, is clear that, and so I would assume, I just assumed there was some kind of tracking mechanism to see compliance.
Yeah. As those licenses come through, what we have talked about in the past, and it has been a couple of years since that has passed, is that if there was ever any question or any doubt, his office would contact ours to do a, to take a look and do an audit. And it did happen on a couple of occasions a few years ago. It hasn't happened since.
And how was it done? Is it done on a specific business basis or throughout the, the new liquor licenses that were obtained that have gaming from the date forward?
The way they had been done was asking about specific businesses where there was doubt or concern.
Is that, so that, so we do not, the answer is we don't track it? We don't keep track of it as we go along? It's a complaint-driven process?
Yeah. We don't, in my office, track it. We only respond when asked to do an audit, because my office does have the actual sales data for individual businesses, so we would have to be involved, but we only get involved when asked.
So the individuals that brought this up, this topic up to me, because I was asked by some constituents, that I, I need to ask them what specific business they're concerned about and then pass that information along, because we don't track it. Is that correct?
In part, maybe I can help with, with Bill just a moment. The, this is probably most likely being treated like any other ordinance violation. I'm aware that there have been probably three or maybe four kind of quasi-audits, and that has been done when there's been a complaint, you know, that food is not being sold. Typically, I think what has happened, and Bill may correct me, and certainly, please do, is typically there'll be a request for the sales tax information.
Right.
And that's one way in order to track or try to do a comparison. And so I would say that there is not a mechanism in place that every single, every single restaurant that has gaming is not being audited every year. But if there's a complaint, then they're audited.
That helps me, and, and because I will go back to the person, there's actually two people that ask and see if they can, I'll ask them what the, what businesses they're concerned about.
Because you're talking about a fairly large number.
Right.
So if you were auditing, you know, if you were checking their taxes every year, it could be pretty.
Right. I get that, but, and I, I think that's a fair, that's a fair response, but I sure would wish that the two or three other times that I asked that I would have been told that rather than heard nothing, so I don't know.
I think the mayor wants to chime in.
Yeah, imagine what we should do is, there's a, I'll get with corporate counsel, I'm not sure if parlors are part of that. You know, when the ordinance was first presented, there's parlors. I don't know if they're, if they're grandfathered in, but what we should do is, if there's a complaint, you know, the restaurants, I think everybody knows what the restaurants are, they're going to be in compliance. So it's those outside that realm that probably should take a look at every year. So we'll have to come up with that process to make that happen. The mayor, I think that's the genesis of the complaint, so I will see what I can come up with, and I'll get back to Director McCarty on an individual basis, and we'll see if we can get to the bottom of it. Thank you.
Alderman Redpath.
Follow up with the mayor. Is there different categories? I mean, one of the compliances is 60% food, right? And then is there other categories that are falling under? Like you said, there was a parlor, but there's also, there's also places that don't have food, and they're, and they have them, and I just, they've been in there for quite a while, so I, I don't know. That's what I'm asking.
Probably what we should do is categorize them, I would think, you know, and just list them out, have one general report, but the ones that fall into the realm of annual reporting, we should follow up with those. But the restaurants, of course, I think those would be, unless there's a complaint specifically on a restaurant, I don't think that's going to happen. But with regards to the other categories, if they're grandfathered in, then that'd be one that we wouldn't do a regular report on, on annual basis, but there, if there's one that we feel are within that realm of audit each year, we should be following up on those, so we'll set up that process and make sure that happens on a regular basis, so.
Just to supplement, the way the audit process has worked is, when, when there has been a complaint, request is for the tax information, and there's actually a letter sent to the licensee saying, "You have to come in and provide proof." So it has included looking at their actual sales receipts, you know, it's, it's more than just simply contacting OBM, but it's actually like a real audit, where they're going to be producing receipts and so on. So it's not, it's an, it's a more of an intensive process than you might first think. There are categories that are grandfathered, you may recall, and then there are different formulas in relation, and what the mayor's speaking about, about some of the parlors, the relationship between the liquor sales versus the revenue from the gaming. So there's a couple of different compartments there, but it has been primarily complaint-driven.
Is there, is there a fine, is there a line? Is there a, a way for us to distinguish who was grandfathered and who isn't?
Yes.
Okay. So some people didn't, weren't required to have food at the, at the beginning.
The, the formula, the ratio, does not apply.
Okay. Thanks.
Director McCarty, do you want to say something?
I was just going to say, and I think Mr. Circle summed it up pretty clearly, that the genesis of the cap that was put in place was as of a certain date, so any licenses after that point, anything before would be grandfathered. And the genesis was to try and prevent more of the proliferation of the parlors.
Right.
That everybody's concerned about. So theoretically, there shouldn't be any more of those parlors or gaming parlors that everyone is concerned about that occurred after that point in time. And that's really why those were put in place. And I think probably what has happened, rather than doing an audit every single year because of what that would entail, it was probably more intended to be if there was a concern that came through from Mr. Oliver or from the public, as Alderman Donilon is talking about, then we would take a proactive action at that point to do an audit of a particular location rather than doing it for all locations. And we certainly can do that. If Alderman Donilon would get us the locations of concern, we can, we can conduct that for him. And then.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate.
One second. I got Senor. Just, Alderman Senor.
The, a couple of questions, and Mr. Circle. Does the city, do they regulate or make the decision, determination who gets these gaming machines, or does that come from the state?
That is exclusively the state.
Okay. Now, so if, and then Alderman Donilon, to your question, if it's found that someone's not following the 60-40% rule, 60% rule, is, is there some kind of penalty that's in place, or is there a fine that the city can impose?
Lose a license.
Or, or what is, what would be, be the procedure?
Alderman, would you like to answer?
I'm sorry, Mr. Circle. I'm sorry.
No, I apologize. What would end up happening is if, if there is an ordinance violation, it could lead to losing the license, which means you'd lose the gaming, because you have to have, with one exception, you have to have a liquor license in order to have gaming as a prerequisite. So that's the way the city can have some, some minimal control over it. Without a license, you can't get gaming unless you're a truck stop.
Alderman Donilon.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate you letting me divert the topic from the, the specific ordinance, but it is, it is, as you know, related, and that's all I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you much. No, it's very germane. We had a motion for consent on this and seconded. Any further discussion? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. We've got all in favor, one present. Motion carries. Moving on to the next ordinance, please.
CWLP, 2019-092. An ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UE 19-12-71, Unit 33 Chimney Safety Systems Repair with Hammond Custodians Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $279,692 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move to consent.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. We got a motion for consent and a second. Any discussion? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Was opposed? Motion carries.
2019-093. An ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UE 19-01-76, Cole House Road Relocation with Truman L. Flat and Sons Company Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $577,745.80 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Second.
Motion for consent and seconded. Any discussion? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Was opposed? Motion carries.
2019-094. An ordinance accepting proposal number UE 19-26 with All Storm Power Incorporated for Emergency Boiler and Equipment Repairs for a three-tier, three-year time period in an amount not to exceed $7 million for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
We have a motion for consent and a second. Any questions?
Just a quick question.
Alderman Senor.
Would this be a $7 million a year contract specifically?
So basically, this is a three-year contract that we're asking for $7 million in funding.
Is it $7 million a year?
No, let me finish. So what this does is that basically, when we're going to run out of money, yeah, we're estimating for the next year, we're, that we could spend $7 million. Basically, majority of it is on, you know, four, followed by 33. And there, really, we don't plan on spending any money on 31, 32 during this, this term. But in a year's time, if we spend up to this amount on Unit 33 and four, then we'd be coming back for an additional increase in funding, you know, within this three-year cycle.
So what, what is the possible total amount you could spend? That's what I'm trying to get at.
Seven million.
So seven is, for, over the three, total three years, 70 is going to be the total amount spent.
Correct.
Thank you.
Right. And the last, the last contract that was awarded was back in 2015 for a three-year contract for 21 million.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seen in, all in favor?
Aye.
Was opposed? Motion carries.
2019-095. An ordinance approving an agreement in an amount not to exceed $200,400 for Toshiba America Energy Corporation for inspection and maintenance of the Dahlem Power Plant Number, Unit Number Four turbine for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move to consent.
Second.
Got a motion for consent, seconded. Any questions, discussion? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Was opposed? Motion carries.
2019-115. An ordinance approving a professional services agreement with Burns &amp; McDonald Engineering Company Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $39,750 for engineering services for an interconnection facility study in relation to the MISO J750 project for the Office of Public Utilities.
Who did debate?
Second.
Okay. Motion for debate and seconded. I believe we have an amendment on this one. Should be in front of everybody. Number one.
I have a question about the original ordinance.
Okay. Go ahead.
Can you explain, Doug, what, I guess, this is for connectivity to a wind farm? Where's this wind farm supposedly, and what's, or are we trying to start up our own wind farm, or what, what's, what's the deal? Because if it's the other, this, I'm a fight.
So basically, you know, there's a FERC, okay? They're, basically, the federal government is, requires us that we have to allow anybody that's going to be able to connect to our transmission system the right to do so. So there's a process through each of the organizations across the country who belong to MISO. And what they do is that they do studies to see what those connections are. This just happens to be a developer that, that wants to do a wind farm, and it's by no means that we are in any kind of an agreement with that company to buy wind or energy or capacity. So what they want to do is they want to connect to our, our substation. So in order to do that, we have to do a study under MISO to do that. If we do not proceed with this, MISO can go ahead and do it on their own, and they will not include us in that study, and they will not basically recommend installing the connection per our standards and per our, the technology that we use. So that's why we want to be in control with the study, because it's fully reimbursed by MISO. So, you know, we will go and contract with Burns &amp; McDonald, do the study per our standards and guidelines, and then we'll turn that data over to MISO, they'll turn it over to the wind developer, and then they'll determine if they want to proceed or not. But we'll be fully reimbursed for that cost.
For the, for the complete $39,750?
Correct. And in addition, any time that we also include in that, so the supervisors that are involved in dealing with the Burns &amp; McDonald report would also be paid for as well.
To, to clarify, maybe with Alderman Hanauer's question, this is really, from my understanding, that this is dealing exactly with the electric grid component. They would not be serving the city. It's just so, because of our functionality as part of the national or regional electric grid.
Right.
This happens to be the closest point. MISO and the federal regulations can require the city, because we're part of that, to cooperate, but it has nothing to do with the wind farm serving the city or buying from the city or anything. It's purely a regulatory requirement. If we don't do it, they'll do it without us.
I, I just, and I appreciate that. I, I was concerned, because I do know that there's some opposition to a wind farm to the west of us somewhere, not quite sure, but I know there's, there's a lot of opposition to it, and I didn't know, I just, I wanted, at first I thought we were going to throw a windmill up somewhere around Westchester, and that wasn't going to work too well for those folks, so.
And it's because we are a transmission owner, so we have the transmission system that we, that we're basically required by the federal government to allow open access.
And, and isn't it correct that the only reason that it's this particular point, it happens to be the closest? Because there are more, the more different points they could do, but it would be much more expensive.
Correct.
So this is purely a engineering aspect that happens to be the closest point.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman Donilon, do you have a question?
I, I do, but you answered one of them about the cost. That was my major concern, so you, I think you did a good job of answering that question. Just to be clear, there would be zero obligation, other than what we've discussed here with the city. We're not required to do anything else other than fund the study, get the results, and obviously turn those over to the appropriate entities. That's correct. Right? There's no other?
Well, if, if the wind developer decides to proceed, we would have to provide the open access to our system. We don't have to buy any wind, but it would, it would connect to our system.
And if any costs were involved in that connection, they would be paid for by the private company?
Yes, correct.
Okay. And then, just out of curiosity, how was this firm that we're going with picked? Was there an RFP? How'd we do it?
We solicited quotes from different engineering firms that can do this type of work, and they were the cheapest.
Yep. Just a ballpark, how many? Three, five. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Any other questions on this? I think we have an amendment still, or?
I was just going to address the amendment. Go ahead.
Okay. So we have an amendment. Is there a motion to adopt amendment?
I made a motion to adopt amendment number one to, to this, please.
Okay. We have a motion, adopt amendment, and seconded. Any discussion on the amendment? Alderman Redpath, do you want to talk about the amendment now?
No, I'm good.
Okay. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
See none, amendment's adopted. Then any discussion on the ordinance as amended?
You wanna leave it on debate, or you wanna change?
Go ahead.
I, I, Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion, we, I'll withdraw my debate and put it, put it to consent.
Okay, so, all right, good. So we have a motion to withdraw from debate, put our consent, seconded, any discussion? See none, all in favor of the ordinance as amended for consent?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries for consent.
Public Safety, two thousand nineteen zero nine six, an ordinance authorizing purchase of an e-rash driver exchange module from Tyler Technologies for an amount not to exceed one hundred and sixty thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars for the Springfield Police Department.
Move to consent.
Second.
All right, we have a motion for consent and seconded, any discussion? Alderman Hanar.
This is?
Yeah, something from the police, is it police department? Their chief?
Come on down.
Chief, wind slow.
Yeah, this will go to fund our e-crash solution. So basically, we can go through paperless, we're already doing our reports paperless now. This allows to do the state crash reports paperless. We wrote a grant for it and got the grant awarded here a couple of weeks ago, so now it's just authorizing the contract to actually get the ball rolling.
Okay, great, great.
Great, thanks, chief.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we have a motion for consent, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Public Works, two thousand nineteen zero nine seven, an ordinance submitting chapter one fifty-three of the nineteen eighty-eight City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended pertaining to requirements for subdivisions suitability, including adjacent frontage and access roadway standards.
Move to consent.
Second.
We have a motion for consent and seconded, any discussion on this?
Chris Hemmerich from the chamber's here.
Okay. Chris Hemmerich from the chamber, please call him up.
Thanks for an opportunity just to share a brief word. Over the last twelve months, the Chamber's Development Policy Council has worked with the city, specifically the Department of Public Works, on replacing what's been known as the Developers Agreement. There's been a lot of conversation about that for a number of years. After numerous meetings, significant work done by everybody who's been involved, we reached an agreement on the new minimum road standards ordinance that if approved, would replace the old Developers Agreement. We believe this agreed-upon ordinance is better for the City of Springfield, better, better for our taxpayers and the development community than the ordinance that it would replace. Why? Because when subdivisions are developed, this new road standards ordinance will ensure that appropriate roads are built at the same time and as well. So Dean Graven, I just wanna say a word, Dean has led our Development Policy Council for twelve years? Twelve years, and really led this effort well. And we feel like we've got a good resolution to a problem that has existed for a number of administrations.
So what about the developers that had proposals on the table that may have not got, that had a different agreement?
Yeah, this ordinance is an ordinance that speaks only to everything moving forward. Those remain on the table, and each one of those are agreements with the, with the city that, that have to be dealt with by the city.
But will we be required to make sure they follow through if they're part of the agreement as far as building the roads that they obligated?
Yeah, we're working through the process, through Public Works, kind of similar what the parameters are under this agreement, I believe, but Corporation Council can answer that.
The, this, if to supplement a little with what Chris was just saying. You may recall that the city has had in place, perhaps fifteen or twenty years, what has been referred to as the adjacent roadway formula. And there has been a, in a way, a failure of that policy, because it provided for letters of credit, but, and anyone may correct me, but really never built any roads. So that has been a source of considerable frustration by way of both city and, I think, business community and just general public. So there are existing letters of credit that are under the old ordinance. And what, one of the difficulties, just very quickly, I don't wanna take up too much time, but they were tied to road standards that the city could never feel, afford to build. So this changes that going forward to a road system that, and if Nate were here, I would refer to him, but, because he's educated, everybody involved.
TJ is here.
Okay. And, but the road that's being defined is gonna be tied to the, basically, the daily traffic count. So the road matches what the actual usage is. And with the existing ones, Alderman, we will, on a case-by-case basis, work with them in coming up basically with a plan that ties them to the new ordinance, more or less, for the areas that are directly adjacent to the existing developments.
So they're not gonna drop the quality of the road? Because I, I know that in the past, that some of the subdivisions were put in substandard, not proper rocking underneath the blacktop and that type of thing. So is the quality, are we gonna require the developers at this point to, to fulfill our, our, our minimum standards?
On a case-by-case basis, the twenty-two-foot road standard with meeting our normal requirements is what we're working with on those that are having the letters of credit. The original standard called for a three-lane road, which typically might not be built for ten or fifteen or twenty years, simply because of the daily traffic counts, didn't justify it. So that's one of the reasons why, under the old agreement, the roads, roads were just never built.
I think I misspoke on my, my question, and TJ, maybe you can, I can explain. But there was, there was some subdivisions put in where they, they didn't properly put the proper laring underneath the blacktop before they poured the blacktop. Some of them were actually even pouring blacktop on top of just dirt, is that correct? And now that, are we gonna hold that, that criteria up, that they have to, have to do that?
Yeah, absolutely. And I mean, if it was a subdivision with a new street that was built like that, that never should've been done that way. But we're observing to make sure that doesn't happen. But this is for the existing streets, and there's language in there that says where it's an oil and chip street that needs to be converted to asphalt. It's a minimum three-and-a-half-inch structural overlay.
And, and that's part of the reasons some of our roads have fallen apart today, is because they weren't properly put in several, several years ago. And I'm hoping that the standard goes back up, so we, it'll save us on repairing and replacing streets, so, thank you.
Dean, did you have any?
Yeah.
Since I've been involved in this since two thousand and seven, some of the things you just brought up, Chuck, they were put on dirt. Because the way it was designed is called the, it's a compaction system with lime, and you churn lime up. The lime takes all the water out, and it was, it followed the city's standards. So it didn't get by with things. And a lot of these standards, and I'm not an engineer, but I feel like I'm a junior engineer after twelve years, that they were following standards. One of the things that was done, and between the home builders and this committee, we convinced CWLP and the Water Division to start putting the water lines that go underneath the street, because you have a main down one side, and you have houses on another. They used to bore, or actually dig. And once you start putting pressure and boring under an asphalt road, you're putting pressure. So now, all the new subdivisions, you see these blue pipes sticking out on both sides as you drive around. So the water lines were put in before the road was finally compacted, and the lime stabilization was used, and then the asphalt. So you don't get that bump, da-bump, da-bump every time you go.
That's where you had the cracks in the road and had to come back in.
Absolutely, absolutely. So that was changed, and I'm sorry, I didn't come with my calendar of events, but that was probably at least nine years ago, at least nine or ten years ago. So when we were brought back together in two thousand and seven, under the Davlin administration, this Development Policy Council is a public-private group. So we had the blessing of Chairman Van Meter, at the time Mayor Davlin. And we formed private engineers, private developers, every entity you could think of. CWLP Water, CWLP Electric, the Airport Authority, the Park District, the Sanitation District, it's a very large group, very technical group. And we worked for twelve years on this, and it just, it took that long. But we're, Chris is right, the last twelve months have been phenomenal, we've worked very hard. This is a road standard that is a good road standard, so it's not a subpar. And it's, the most important thing is the road is going to be built now, when a subdivision goes in. It has nothing to do with what we think we will do next year or the year after. But under the old development policy, we didn't get any.
So that, so we don't have to wait for, they, they don't have to wait for the artery road to come down to the subdivision?
We're, in this ordinance, it's not only in front of the subdivision, but we have to connect to the next arterial that brings us to the core of the city. And it got very, that's where it got very technical, it took months and months to work that out. So it's not just that two-hundred, five-hundred, a thousand feet in front of the subdivision, then we have to make sure this developer is connecting to a core, I'll call it a core road, somehow we get to the town. So again, I wanna thank the Public Works Director, Nate, TJ, and all the staff. The chamber has been phenomenal, gone through three chamber or four chamber directors through this process. So, you know, we're getting there, this is good for the taxpayer, it's good for the citizens, they will be safe roads. So I thank you, and I look forward to this ordinance passing. Any other questions?
Yeah, Alderman Ferginzi.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I, I wanna make sure that we're including sidewalks in all these subdivisions, because there's too many.
This is nothing to do with subdivision, we're not changing subdivision ordinances. This is the roads outside, just in front of the subdivision. Developers have to put sidewalks, streets, city lights, CWLP puts them up, developer pays for them, street signs. All that's paid for by the developer in the subdivision and the sidewalks. The ADA ramps are paid by the developers. So all of that's inside the subdivision, this ordinance does not change that at all. This is about the roads outside.
So if there's not gonna be any kind of a dispensation for sidewalks going forward?
Depends on which roads are you're connecting to. If there's no sidewalks out in those areas, no.
In the, in the subdivision?
In the subdivision, there will be sidewalks.
Okay.
Because this ordinance is not.
Too many kids walking on the street.
No, this does not affect that.
Not a safe environment.
We have Alderman Donlin, and then Hanar.
Thank you, Mr. Graven. I appreciate all your efforts and the chamber's efforts, and this, as you said, this started a long time ago. You were there. Couple different lives ago from me, and, and I applaud the efforts. I'd see, throughout the last ten years, I've, I've seen you gentlemen out and about, ask how it was going, and you've told me, well, it's not so good, or it's, it's getting better, or whatever the situation happened to be at hand. But really, my only question's this of you, and then I have some question of staff and others. Would you consider this topic a big deal? How we're going to fund our roads outside new subdivisions, is that a big deal for the city?
Yes, sir. Because we weren't building roads outside of subdivisions. We had letters of credit to set since nineteen ninety-six. So you, you weren't, we were not, as taxpayers, we were not, as residents, getting anything from the old ordinance. And this ordinance is not going retro to take care of what those things are, it's going forward. So you will have those roads built as we go.
And, and I trust you, I trust the work of this group, and I wanna make sure that this is, it's clear, it's not a shot at any of those efforts, because I'm sure we're in better shape. But I consider this topic a big deal. I was around, much younger man, when, when Mayor Langfelter's father, and then after that Mayor Hacera, were negotiating the developer, the Developers Agreement, as it's known as. I know you don't like that term.
I don't like the title, but, yes.
But it's, but it's a big deal. And, and if I had a constituent calling me on the phone right now and say, tell me, if it was in the newspaper tomorrow, tell me about this ordinance. I could read them, I could read them, the technical ordinance that has been provided to me, I might add, last Friday. But I don't know how, in layman's terms, how it's being done. And I don't expect to explain that tonight, again. But I would encourage someone at City Hall to inform the people around this horseshoe, when there are ordinances that come up that are a big deal, to brief us about it, before it comes to this room. And I'm tired of it. And I don't get angry very often, but it's happening time and time again. And I don't know why, I just, when, when big ordinances come up, it'd be nice, again, Mr. Graven, I know you just happen to be standing there, but it's a big deal. Just give us a briefing, let us know what's going on, provide us an opportunity to have, have maybe some feedback, or ask some questions ahead of time. Doesn't change the, the, what's been negotiated over the last decade, but this is a big deal for our city. And if roads are built, oh my goodness, what a, what a great thing. I wanna be clear, I probably will vote for this, I'm sure it's wonderful, because I trust the individuals that have been involved. But if I'm asked by my constituents, I don't have the answer, and I don't like it.
Alderman Hanar.
Yeah, thank you. I, I wanna congratulate everybody involved. I know this was like a fifteen-round boxing match, that you guys went back and forth, and, and Mark and your staff, and, I guess, the staffs before you, and, 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 and of course, you know, the, the developers. You know, I look at what, if this could've been done ten years ago, what, what some of the roads would've looked like out in Ward Ten. You know, I mean, we stayed, we got the minimum road standards, but, you know, they're good, but they're not where they should be, right? And so I'd like to just say congratulations to all of you guys involved, that was involved in the negotiations. I know everybody didn't get what they wanted on both sides, but I think in the end.
We're getting roads, though.
We're getting roads, and it is great for the citizens, so thank you very much.
Alderman Thailand.
Dean, thank you for the presentation. I think that you did a good job of, of showing that there's a, this is outside the neighborhood agreement, this is not the
Correct.
stuff on the inside, which I agree with John, we have some things that we oughta look at next. But I would like to address TJ. TJ, first off, congratulations on your promotion. For those of you, TJ is now the, the traffic engineer for the city. And it's been vacant for a while, and what a big win for you to get under your belt on your, on your first major thing. So first off, congratulations on the position.
Thank you.
Second off, congratulations on the ordinance.
Thank you.
Congratulations, TJ.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Alderman, Alderman Senor? Or the mayor?
What?
You defer to the mayor?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
If you're wondering what this means, all you have to do is drive down Archer Elevator Road or Hilltop, and that's what's been prevented, those type of roads. Lenhart will be built, or improved this summer. And so it's huge, it's been over fifteen years in the making. And so we appreciate Director Mahoney with regards to Public Works and all their efforts, because we leave it up to the professionals. We stay out of the way, government stays out of the way, so the professionals can get it done. And I think that's why we got the conclusion. I mean, that's why it took over fifteen years. We let our professional staff come up with the agreement, and went back and forth with the developers that Dean or Chris can speak to, but it is a win-win for everybody. And roads will be built. So when I stood up there at the, I think it was Corky Joiners Project out west, and people were concerned about Lenhart, I said, we should be building these within five years. Well, we're gonna build it within two years, probably, my statement. So that's what's important about it, so we really appreciate everybody's hard work with regards to making it happen and moving it forward. So thank you to the chamber and Public Works for moving us forward in that direction.
Any other questions? Alderman, Alderman.
This is an important ordinance, and a lot of hard work has gone into it. As Alderman, we all have a different idea, a different interest about which particular ordinances we wanna really consider, you know, at a hyper level of importance. Some of us might think, for example, the Habitat, or the, you know, Habitat for Humanity ordinance coming up is real important, because it's gonna add a whole new feature for drop-off large items, as opposed to always pickup. That's a huge advancement for our city. And there's another ordinance in here about East Side Tiff being expanded or reviewed for expansion. So I, I think we gotta be careful about being upset that we weren't fully briefed, because again, this is the final destination of ordinances. And if we're members of the Chamber of Commerce, we can ask to be briefed by the Chamber of Commerce for progress and so forth. So I just, I don't have a problem with an ordinance coming to the City Council in its final form, instead of revisiting something in draft form, draft form, draft form. Because I think that could end up, this is in response to Alderman Donlin's comments. So I, I don't have a problem with getting something in its final form.
Go ahead.
Alderman, I concur with you wholeheartedly. It's just when things are of utmost importance, like the future of our roads, it is a little different. Or if we're gonna make a major change at the utilities, example, Habitat for Humanity ordinance, that program's already in place. It's a continuation of something that I think we've all supported unanimously before. And anyway, I, I, but I do, I do take to heart your, your point about everything's subjective in life, but I think there's not a person in this room would disagree that the future of our roads and a major change in the funding formula in areas on the edge of our city are big deals. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I think we have a motion for consent and a seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Two thousand nineteen zero nine eight, an ordinance authorizing a sole-source contract with PH Breton &amp; Sons Incorporated, previously approved pursuant to chapter thirty-eight point thirty-five for contracts under a hundred thousand dollars, authorizing additional payment of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and authorizing a supplemental appropriation of two hundred thousand dollars for the Office of Public Works.
Consent.
Second.
Got a motion for consent and seconded, any discussion? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Two thousand nineteen zero nine nine, a supplemental resolution notifying the State of Illinois Department of Transportation and Motor Fuel Tax Funds in an amount of fourteen million, four hundred thousand dollars may be used for engineering and construction work associated with the Carpenter Street Underpass Project for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent.
Second.
Got a motion for consent and seconded, any discussion? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Two thousand nineteen one hundred, a supplemental resolution notifying the State of Illinois Department of Transportation that motor fuel tax funds in an amount of six million dollars may be used for the real estate purchases to complete the Ash Street and Laurel Street Underpass improvement projects for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent.
Second.
Got a motion for consent and seconded, any discussion? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Two thousand nineteen one oh one, a supplemental resolution notifying the State of Illinois Department of Transportation that motor fuel tax funds in an amount of thirty-five thousand dollars was used for land acquisition for the Archer Elevator Road and Isles Avenue Improvement Projects for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent.
Second.
Got a motion for consent and seconded, any questions? See none, all, those, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Two thousand nineteen one oh two, a supplemental resolution notifying the State of Illinois Department of Transportation and Motor Fuel Tax Funds
2019-102, a supplemental resolution notifying the State of Illinois Department of Transportation that motor fuel tax funds in an amount of $79,501.20 was used for salt dome repairs for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second.
Got a motion for consent, and a second, and any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
2019-103, an ordinance approving an addendum to the annexation agreement with Piper Glen Development Corporation to improve Cockrell Lane along with Savannah Point Subdivision for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent.
Mr. Chairman, on this one, we need to hold this, this, and the following one in committee, because these are actually dealing with what Alderman Redpath, you know, had talked about earlier. But we have to have a public hearing, and we've published that, and the soonest we could, because of the timing, was for March 19th.
I pull my motion.
So if you just leave it in committee, then we'll act on it next committee meeting, then it's like any annexation, we'll just hold a public hearing and then address it.
Remove my motion.
Okay, so we hold that in committee. All right, moving on, I think we're holding the next one, too?
Yes, sir, please.
2024?
Thank you.
Moving on.
2019-105, an ordinance authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with the Springfield Airport Authority for improvements to Irwin Road, Stearman Road, and Aviation Lane for the Office of Public Works.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Motion for consent, and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Was that, Mr. Clerk, were we supposed to hold that one, too?
105 is fine, if you're satisfied.
2019-106, an ordinance authorizing renewal of contract number PW17-24 under RFP 17-24 with Habitat for Humanity of Sagamond County for collection, recycling, and disposal of bulky items for an amount not to exceed $500,000 from April 1st, 2019 through March 31st, 2021 for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent.
Second.
All right, we have a motion for consent, and a second, any discussion?
Yeah, can you explain exactly how this is going to work so we can inform the residents?
Let's have Mark Mahoney come up. And anybody from Habitat for Humanity like to come up?
Director, could you explain this in the clearest layman's terms on how this is going to work so the public will be duly informed, please?
Do our best. We have Habitat here as well, but it's not a real big change. It's the same program we've had. Actually, we've had a relationship with Habitat for going on two years now, we're just renewing that agreement, and it's worked well. The good thing is that we're using Habitat, people become used to that, it's drop-off, they're down at the old Goodwill on Sixth Street. The thing that's changed is one of the things we added as a feature, we're going to try to experiment with, is something the mayor came up with, I know some council members, to have a drop-off feature. So you can call the number and schedule a pickup, they'll tell you to set it out this day, Habitat comes, they pick it up, and they take care of it for you. I've used it myself.
What type of items are we speaking of?
There's a whole list, I sent an email to you, and we're going to send a press release out once this passes, but it's a variety of items, it's mattresses, couches, appliances, grills, lawn mowers, stuff you want to get rid of, basically, other than electronics.
So they can call, all they have to do is call a number, and it doesn't even, I mean, they can call a number, and Habitat will come and pick it up.
You can, or you can go on the city website. We have information on the city website as well that explains all that, and it'll have the number on there, and then you call the number, and Habitat works with you to schedule the pickup, they'll answer questions, they work with the public. It works very well. I know when we first started, we worked through the kind of the time lapse, I know some Alderman had a concern, it was taking a few weeks to schedule, and I'll let Colleen talk about that a little bit, but they tightened that up, and it's pretty, I don't know what their turnaround is now, but it usually is pretty quick. And again, the added feature is, we're going to offer people, if they want to get rid of it quicker and drop it off, they can take you down to Habitat and schedule that, you're going to call and set it up so they know when you're coming, but you could do that as well.
Very good, thank you.
Any other?
Anything?
Thank you. We are really excited to be considered for our next two years. I just wanted to add to this that the profits that we are receiving from this program are starting a new program with the Sagamond County, we can't restrict just the city of Springfield, but it's going to fund critical home repairs. So homeowners in our county that cannot afford to have a roof repaired, ADA compliance so that people can stay in their homes longer, air conditioning, major repairs, we're funding that program with the proceeds.
Can you give the number, the call for, to schedule a pickup?
Sure. 523-2710, or you can go on our website, I never say this, and go to our website, habitatssagamond.com, click on Restore and Large Item Pickup, and you can order your own pickup.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you much.
They do a great job.
Any other discussion on this? Seeing none, we had a motion for consent, and a second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Finance, 2019-107, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing execution of a two-year contract, number FM19-10-54 with Etherol Oil Company, Prairieland FS Incorporated, and Energy Petroleum for the purchase of oils and lubricants for fleet maintenance and public works from March 1st, 2019 through February 28th, 2021, for an amount not to exceed $165,622.70.
Move to consent.
Second.
Got a motion for consent, and a second, and any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
2019-108, an ordinance authorizing execution of a subseparate agreement, number 17-SR-0009, with the City of Springfield Office of Public Works Division of Unsafe Structures for demolition of unsafe and dangerous vacant residential structures, utilizing the city's community development block grant funds in an amount not to exceed $80,000 for the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Move for consent.
Second.
Got a motion for consent, and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
2019-109, an ordinance authorizing a transfer of Far East Tiff funds from one account to another in the amount of $60,000 for the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Move to consent.
Second.
All right, got a motion for consent, and a second, any questions? Alderman Senor.
Yeah, what is, Mayor, what is this transfer doing, and why are we transferring funds?
The money's staying in the Far East Tiff, we're just transferring it. When we were doing our budget, we, the idea of expanding either the Far East or the SHA Tiff wasn't quite finalized, so we didn't put any money in there for a study, for any of the studies that were done. So now that we know what we're going to do, which will be the next ordinance, we're putting money in for the study and for printing. So it's just really, it stays within, it's from 111, from 2110, we're moving 50,000 to 1215, and 10,000 to 1401.
Since you brought up the next ordinance, can I ask a question, or should I wait for her?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, I mean, so what are you planning on extending the Far East Tiff from and to?
That's what I'm going to tell you.
Thank you.
Yeah, do we want to vote on this one first?
Okay, go ahead.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next one, Mr. Clerk, could you read that, and then we'll-
2019-110, an ordinance authorizing an agreement with PGAV Planners LLC for a feasibility study to amend the Far East Tiff redevelopment area for an amount not to exceed $36,100 for the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Is there a motion?
Motion for consent.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Still a little question. So what do you plan on extending?
All right.
From and to.
All right, before you've got a map of the study area that we're looking at, the boundaries are Madison on the north, which butts to the SHA Tiff, and 10th Street on the west, 14th Street on the east, and Pine on the south. On the east, it butts up against the Far East Tiff, and in the northwest, it butts against the downtown Tiff. So the area that's kind of outlined in yellow is our proposed study area. What we were hoping to do this time around when we were contracting with PGAV was just a little bit different than what we've done in the past. We want to take a more holistic approach, concentrating on our most valuable resource, and that's our people. And we'd like to establish a plan to not only address housing, but to review the services for the social and emotional well-being of the people within this area. We want to look at it more holistically. We've kind of identified it as a core area, standing for connecting our resources economically. By abutting up to the SHA Tiff, which is going to end in just a few years, we'll be able to port funds into this extended area, and then we can start our development process. Now, one of the things that we talked to PGAV with, you know, before, it's always been, they have come forward, and they will continue to do this, they will take the Far East Tiff and update it with all these properties. But we also asked them if they would give us, provide us with some guidelines for soliciting residential and commercial developers. They are going to help us with an RFP, they're going to help us write something so that we can bring different developers, not only locally, but maybe regionally, and people that they've worked with, so that we can bring them into this area to help us develop it. So it's a little different than what we've done in the past with them, but when they were telling me a little more about what their services were, I thought this was a good opportunity to address this. So again, this area goes around Comer Cox Park and the Chamber, I'm sorry, I've forgotten for a minute, the park's around there. And what we want to do is pull all these services together. We've got the youth in this area, we've got the Boys and Girls Club, we've got the Salvation Army Community Center, and we'd like to address all these services at one time. And again, like I said, look at this just a little bit differently, it's not just about houses. We need to talk about the social, emotional well-being of the residents.
That's all well and good, but you never answered my question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
What is the current Far East Tiff, and where are you going to extend the boundaries to? Because the information you gave us deals with the Madison Park Place Tiff extension.
No, no, this is the Far East, this is the Far East.
The study that you gave us, it goes from Madison Park on the north?
Right. It butts up to Madison Park.
Right, but where is the current Far East Tiff now, and where are you trying to extend it to? That's the question that I asked.
Okay, the Far East Tiff is right here along, on 14th Street. It ends at 14th Street. See where the yellow line is going down there? That's 14th Street. And it goes on down.
And you're trying to extend it to what?
We're going to take it over to 10th Street.
Okay, and incorporate these boundaries here? So you're going to go over to 10th Street?
Right, 10th Street and go all the way up.
And then go up to Madison Park?
Madison, yes.
Okay.
Yes, I apologize.
Thank you. All that other information is good, but you never answered my question. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Yeah, I got a question on the-
Sure.
Porting the money, because it looks like you're, if you include all this new area, and it sounds like you're be connecting almost all the Tiffs together, it looks like, so are there tensions to port money between, like, say, Madison Tiff to the downtown Tiff, or to the Far East Tiff, or is it all going to go into this new area you're thinking about?
The only money that we're looking at to port right now is from the Madison Park Place Tiff.
So all of it?
Well, yes, yeah, at some point, probably when they, when it's due to, I don't really know the timing of it right now.
Here, do you want to?
Yeah, is there a-
Sure. With regards to Madison Park Place, that's fully developed, it used to be the John Hay Homes, and this gives us the opportunity to port the money into the Far East Tiff as projects become available, similar to what we've been doing with the YMCA with regards to Enos Park and the downtown Tiff. So if the opportunity's there, we're going to take advantage of it. And what's lagged behind in all these years was the Neighborhood of Hope as a plan put forward by the chamber, but no resources. This gives us financial resources, not only with the East Side Tiff, but if we can maximize Madison Park Place in that area, we will take advantage of it.
Okay, so all of it's going to go into this new area here?
It'll be ported as it's needed. It's just not going to be, hey, we extended the Tiff, we're going to port it all? No, it's as projects are needed, just like any other Tiff.
But any kind of expenditures or any kind of transfer still comes back in front of the council, correct?
Right. Yes, oh, yes, absolutely.
I was simply going to say that the Madison Park Place Tiff, I believe expires in '22?
Twenty-two, yes.
And so it's relatively close, so the possibility would be, to the extent that there are surplus funds, being able to then use them in other areas. If the city doesn't try to extend the Tiff, then it automatically dissolves and so on, so that was at least one of the considerations, because the Madison Park Place Tiff is relatively close to the end.
Question, since you brought that up, since that one's about to expire, you have it included in this boundary, you have Madison on the north, so would that extend it, or would it still expire on that portion of it?
The, this does not affect the end date, you know, for the Madison Park Tiff. This doesn't extend the Madison Park.
We're extending the Far East.
And it's not changing the boundaries of Madison. The boundaries stay as is, the Madison Park Place Tiff stays as it is, so 2022 comes along, and it would sunset, then that would go back onto the tax rolls.
That is correct.
Okay, any further questions?
Anything else?
Seeing none?
The one thing you want to point out, if you want to go over the hearing process, or, you know, the process in itself.
Okay, so one of the first things that PGAV will do would be create a timeline, so of course, we'll have to have public hearings, and then this will have to go to the Joint Review Board for input from the public, and then we'll come back to you again.
And with Alderman Redpath's question, all of it ends up back at the council with the report, with the plan, with the boundary extension, so it all ends up back here with a series of ordinances.
Alderman Donilon.
Can't always be about the bad, so, Director, I just want to thank you for keeping me in the loop on this, and this is, it would be a nice infusion for the East Side of Springfield much. Thank you.
Okay.
Any further questions? Seeing none, we had a motion for consent, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Yeah, what, can I get a question real quick? Are you the permanent director? No, I'm serious, I'm serious.
That ordinance has not come forward.
Huh?
She's interim.
Or acting.
She's still acting.
I think her contract's up on Thursday.
But I think you're getting close to the end of your thing, aren't you?
Yeah, less than 48 hours. My contract is up, yes.
Well, I want to tell you something, since you've come on board, you've done a pretty darn good job, and, you know, it was a little slow start getting out of the gate, but you've helped us with the new Lincoln Land Economic Development Council, and some of the stuff that we've brought forward. I know Alderman Turner and I met with you, and Alderman Hanauer and I met with you, so you're doing a good job, so why don't we just get that done, Mayor?
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
No pressure, though. Forty-eight hours.
Forty-eight hours.
Two D service.
All right, did we vote? Oh, okay, we need to vote on this one. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
2019-113, an ordinance authorizing a grant from the Corporation for National and Community Service AmeriCorps in an amount of $155,751 and authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $127,555 for the Office of the Mayor, Community Relations.
Motion for consent?
Second.
There's a motion for consent and a second. Mr. Clerk, please add me as a cosponsor on this. Alderman, I think she would like to be added as a cosponsor too. She and I worked jointly on this, it's been a great thing for the community. Any discussion?
Senior also.
Alderman Senior, would you like to be added as a cosponsor?
Yes, sir.
All right, there we go. Anybody else? Okay, any discussion? We have a motion for consent and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
2019-114, an ordinance authorizing payment of $35,000 for settlement of Sangamon County Circuit Course Case 2018-L-015, Ashley McLeanahan and Whiteside, Delissa Whiteside, ET.AL.V., Joshua Davis.
Is there a motion?
Second.
We have a motion for consent and a second. Any discussion?
Aye.
Seen none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
2019-116, an ordinance authorizing a donation agreement with National Parks Service, United States Department of Interior, the Abraham Lincoln Presidential Library, and Museum of the State and the State of Illinois to fund temporary operations and management of the Lincoln's Home National Historic Site during periods of shutdown for an amount not to exceed $50,000.
Move to debate.
Second.
All right, we have a motion for debate and a second. Any discussion? Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah, I like the idea of this ordinance, but I'm questioning whether it's something that we can actually do because you're intermingling, what we're doing is we're basically taking over payment when the federal government's shut down. Are we getting reimbursement from this? Or is this just, we're just giving it to the federal government in order to keep them going?
Scott, oh, please come on up. And then Mayor, if you want to talk before, Scott? Nope, Scott, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, we're trying to protect ourselves during our high-peak seasons when we have most of our tourists in town. So I mean, this would give the option. I'm not aware that we would be reimbursed, but we need to have a contingency plan in place when it's times when they're shut down, when it's not our off-peak time.
I mean, I can appreciate, you know, I can appreciate that, but I have, I think, I'm just not real comfortable with subsidizing the federal government with our taxpayers' money. That's my concern.
The Lincoln Home is a critical site for us, especially with our group tours. And, you know, we're guaranteeing that they have a site that they will be able to visit.
Kind of follow up, yeah.
May have some cancellations.
Right, and I understand that, but okay, so I guess corporate counsel, if we're paying for people to, the staff, if someone gets hurt, are we liable for the, you know, for damages? Workers' compensation? Are we insured if someone, if a general public falls down on a sidewalk at Lincoln's Home? That's part of the national, you know? Look, I'm just playing devil's advocate here, and my job is, our job is to protect the city. I just think this is a dangerous precedence to get into because it's not just handing money over. We're talking about legal issues, we're talking about insurance issues, a lot of different, lot of different issues out there. I think it's a great, you know, the intention is great, but I just really think we got to be careful with this.
Corporation counsel? Well, Alderman Senior first.
Adding to that, what authority will we have to keep these entities open when they're not controlled by the city? They're controlled by the federal government. So, I mean, if you could answer that question in addition to Alderman Hanauer's.
All right, Corporation counsel, please.
The agreement is limited to basically funding, so the individuals involved would still be managed by the site, by the individuals, federal agencies, and the city's involvement would be limited to money, so they would not become our employees. And this would not transfer the liability of the federal site to the city because it's owned by the, owned and operated by the federal government. It is, would be related to basically paying the operating expenses essentially for, and I believe this is for a period of up to one month, is that, that's my memory, is it was for a 30-day period in the event of a shutdown. So it's kind of like a standby agreement, but they would, the persons working there would not become city employees, nor would the liability of the federally-owned property be transferred to the city. It would still have to be managed, operated in every respect by the federal agency.
Alderman Redpath.
Yeah, if they're ordered shut down by the federal government, who are we to say they have, that they're going to be open and we're going to fund it? That's the part I'm not understanding. How does that come into play?
It would be really voluntary because if the city has a, essentially a donation agreement, an agreement that says we would fund expenses, they could also say to the city, forget it, we don't want to do it. So it's really at their, at their option.
In a follow-up again, what's the, what's the chances of getting reimbursed by the federal government after we do this? Is that something we can look at? I mean, because they said that after the last shutdown that people got back pay, so is that something we could ask for reimbursement? Or is this a donation?
This is now stylized as a donation agreement, so it does not provide for reimbursement, and that would be then at the option of the federal government if they, if monies were appropriated that they could use to do that. But right now, it is set up as a donation agreement, and this would be viewed really as a standby in the event of a closure. However, it's still up to the federal government if they want to take advantage of it.
And I understand Alderman Hanauer's point, and he's just looking out for, you know, any kind of liabilities that we might have, but it is a very valid point about the Lincoln sites because when these people schedule these bus tours from Chicago and come down here, it's a big, expensive operation. And, you know, we, I don't have much of a problem with it unless we're going to put ourselves in jeopardy like Alderman Hanauer suggested we look out for because he's right. The Lincoln Center with all these people coming in, they scheduled these things, we got to give them someplace to come, and so that's just the way I see it.
Mr. Mayor? Yeah, actually, we were approached by the Abraham Lincoln Presidential Library Museum and Alan Lowe and then Tim Good from Lincoln's Home area, and the only federal-operated site's Lincoln's Home. So we wanted to make sure that we, hopefully, there's no shutdown, but if there ever is, then we'd have the opportunity to say, we remain open. You know, you can come visit all the Lincoln sites where I think it's a misnomer, they don't understand the old state Capitol, you still can visit the Lincoln's tomb, people don't understand that. But this is a, kind of a template agreement with the federal government. I think it's done in Philadelphia with, you know, the, with regards to their sites, but the other one is the Statue of Liberty with New York City. So it's been done in other areas, we're just using that as a template and moving in that direction.
Alderman, dial in.
Just a quick question. Can I get a copy of the agreement to look at?
Yes. Any other discussion?
Is the motion to, for debate?
Yes, debates.
Okay, thank you.
All right, all in favor for debate?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries for debate.
General City Business, 2019-111, an ordinance amending Chapter 90 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended pertaining to sidewalk cafe permits.
Move to consent.
Second.
And I'd like to be added as a sponsor.
Thank you. It's motion for consent and a second. I'll add Alderman Dicenzo as a cosponsor. Any discussion on this? Alderman Senior as a cosponsor? Anybody else? Seen none? Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, all.
2019-112, an ordinance to increase the number of class E local licenses by one for Turbo Fire Pizza LLC DBA Turbo Fire Pizza located at 605 West Jefferson Street.
Move for consent. All right, there's motion for consent and a second. Any discussion? Seen none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, that concludes our business, believe. All right. What's next? Any unfinished business coming for the city council? Yes, Alderman Dicenzo.
I'll be quick about this because it's an ongoing issue, but we have alleys filled with trash, and not just trash, but recliners and mattresses and filing cabinets, and don't give me that look about alleys, Alderman Redpath. Please.
I was waiting for it.
We have to do something. The waste haulers aren't sticking to their agreement, there's tons of fly dumping going on, it seems to be on the rise, and we have to do something. As a city council, we have to, we have to hold the waste haulers to the agreement, and it's not being held to at this point in time. So we've got to do something.
Now you feel the pain?
I feel the pain.
Okay.
Director Mahoney, you'd like to come up and address it?
All right, please.
You know, if we wouldn't pave those alleys, they wouldn't be so easy access.
Knock it off. Done, it's over.
I mean, it's always an ongoing problem at this time of year, sometimes it's even worse. I will say, and we've talked a little bit about this, Alderman, I mean, there's not a lot of teeth in some of the ordinance dealing with the waste haulers, and we've talked about if there's something that needs to be done. We had some conversation with City Legal, and we've engaged Krista a little bit in code enforcement, and we're going to have some more discussions with her and try to bring you into that. But I mean, the problem is that there's always so much we can do, and we have to sign them, we clean it up, as you know, go through that process, and it just never ends.
I am happy to do, to work with you however I can to fix this problem. It is unsightly, it's disgusting, it attracts rodents, it's, we've got to do something.
Well, didn't we have something in the garbage ordinance that was supposed to be requiring them to be either reporting it to you for large item pickup or getting it?
The ordinance is a little bit flawed in itself. I mean, because the way it's supposed to work is, yes, they're supposed to do that, but when you have three waste haulers going through the same alley, and some of these items may be dumped here or there, so it's a matter of how do you determine who's responsible for picking up? Now, you could assign a waste hauler a certain area, I guess, to pick up, and Mayor, I know we've talked about that, but they're going to want some kind of compensation from, on that as well. So I mean, there's a lot more detail that has to be put into it if we're going to really hold them accountable, and a lot more teeth in ordinance to do that as well, in my opinion.
All right, Alderman, dial in.
Another topic for Mark when this is done.
Okay, anybody else for?
I got a quick question. Why don't, why, do we, do we use trail cams or anything like that to try to catch some of this fly dumping? Have you got a certain area that it's happening in a lot? I mean, why can't we throw some trail cams?
Sometimes SPD, occasionally, we work with them on that, but there's only so many cameras and such, and we've caught, like, we had a few years back, we were dumping tires in a certain lot, we were able to figure that out, so it's just, I mean, there's a lot of places in the city you can dump, and especially at night in alleys when they're not lit up, it's easy to go down an alley. The best thing is light, when there's, when there's streetlights or lights in the alley, it seems like it helps people go to another area, but it's, there's, like, so we own how many lots? So I mean, those are all potential dumping grounds. So.
You stated the ordinance that we passed two years ago is flawed. Can you make some recommendations and maybe help it along, make it more effective? Not now, but bring it forward.
We'll pull them all together and work on it.
That'd be great.
Alderman Dicenzo will be part of it.
Thank you.
Whoever else, we can take one more, Alderman.
Count me in, too.
Yes, because there's a lot to work.
All right, anybody else for Mark? Nope? All right, Alderman, dial in on a separate matter.
With the storm, the high winds that we just had come through, there's a lot of my constituents that are contacting me about branches, and they're wondering if the city's going to do a storm sweep, like you've mentioned in the past. I know that I've got, I've got piles going from hallway at MacArthur all the way out to the west side where they've got piles already sitting on the curb, and they're just wanting to know whether or not the city's going to make a sweep.
Yeah, we'll work through it. I mean, there's, we were actually pleasantly surprised, actually, with the wind. I got a call from SJR on Sunday, and we had only, actually, believe it or not, three trees on public right-of-way, now granted, on private property, different story, but three trees that actually came down on Sunday that we had to come in and deal with. A lot of times, winds of lesser amount, the high wind, it was like about 61 miles per hour at the airport, I think at 1:00 or 2:00 a.m. We've had much less wind, and we've had dozens of trees down, so I don't know what, why that happened, but we sort of lucked out. But there are branches out there, we are kind of, we try to keep on top, and if we see them, kind of clean them up. And then our spring branch program, we're actually at an RFP out right now, we'll be finalizing that and coming to you with an ordinance, and the plan is now to begin that in April. We're looking at the option of running it through in April, again in May, and then two more times in the fall, and trying to work through some of that, so.
Okay.
So yes, we'll do our best to get them, and if you have, have them call us or call our 789-2246, let us know, and then we'll do our best to get those, and then, like I said, soon the program will be starting, so.
So 789-2246 to report a pile to pick up?
Yeah, I can't guarantee when we'll be able to get to it, though. We'll do our best. So the other option is you can always still sit down to Evans and drop them off as well, so. But we'll, as far as, we guarantee we're going to come through and get everything, that'll be starting here in April, which seems a long ways away, but it's not really, it's only, what, four and a half weeks, so.
All right, any unfinished business? Any new business? I've got two really quick, then I'll get to you. All right, really quick, I was contacted by a constituent regarding the tree commission. I think it's in city code that the tree commission needs to be populated. This constituent stated a, you know, desire to be on it, and then they were told that the city was not interested in populating this commission. Is there any reason for that?
I think it's under review, but Bonnie Drew can speak to it.
Yes, I had reached out to Mary Frances and spoke with her, has spoken with her about that. Springfield Green has been reignited even through some past administrations, and they are taking on the major role in all of this, and I know the contention is that that's something different, but we are still, I am still going through the process of looking at all of these boards and commissions, and we'll be presenting something to you guys shortly.
So there is a plan to fill that commission, it's just not yet?
We're looking at it. I'm not saying yes, I'm not saying no. I, you know, it's going to be reviewed. There needs to be some changes to it, for sure, but, you know, it's being reviewed with all the others as well.
All right, then my other quick question is, the corporation counsel, if a commission's established in city code, is it up to the administration to decide if they want to fill it or not?
The, I would have, I would have to look and see what exactly it says in the tree commission, but normally, commissions, boards and commissions would be a matter of appointment authority, which would be purely executive, and then the council would, of course, determine whether or not there was a qualification and so on.
Okay, well, this constituent's very eager to be on it, so if you would accommodate her request, I would sure gratefully appreciate it.
She can be part of Springfield Green.
And I've extended that to her, and I extended to her through the reception thing, so it's on the radar.
To be continued. All right, thank you. All right, and then I just did a quick update on the land bank. I know the administration was looking at a land bank. Is there any, they moving forward on that at all?
Corporation counsel, with regards to recent purchases or?
Okay, the, I was going to say, effectively, there is a, the city operates a land bank really right now, whether we like it or not, and that latest RFP has just come back. There will probably be between 20 and 30 lots, proposals that have been received that will be accepted. There'll be ordinances, I believe, on Friday, which is the next go-around for the next segment. And beyond, beyond that point, what we'll end up doing is going back with another RFP to try to at least identify those lots that are most marketable. But I believe there, and again, I believe there were 34 or 38 proposals received, and I believe that 20 or 30 of those will be forthcoming in this next cycle.
All right, well, that was kind of my question, but I think there is a desire in Springfield for the establishment of a land bank, and so if the administration can look at doing something along those lines, it'd be greatly appreciated by a number of, a number of residents in the, especially in the older neighborhoods. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, and then the other item which we take an action on with regards to the East Side TIF is with regards to Neighborhood of Hope, they have a large preponderance of properties as well as the city within that area, and so that is essentially land bank for that development plan and putting that into action.
Alderman Hanauer and then Redpath.
I think that, I guess my concern is, I didn't, I found out through the press that we put a $500 minimum bid on these, and I don't think that was anything that we were, we discussed here. I think that, that kept some of the people from bidding. We've got to get these off of our roles. I don't know, I would love to know what we spend if, per year, Mark, if you could get it to me, what we spend per year on these lots for mowing and whatnot. And because if we, if we, if we sell it to somebody for $5, it's cheaper, it's cheaper for the city, it saves us money in the long run. And I just, we've got to get these, these lots off of our roles. We just, we have to.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I'd ask either Val or Cassandra to come forward with regards to that. One concern, of course, is individuals, you know, acquiring the property and then utilizing it for their own profit, so, but I'll let, it was an idea either with Val, Yezel, Oped, or Cassandra, Wilkins, with regards to purchasing agent.
The minimum bid amount was put on there, it was discussed, I know there's a few of us involved in it. We pay a lot of money for the properties, part of it is, we have to purchase them, maintain them, things like that. Part of it is, we have to purchase them, maintain them, things like that. I think part of the idea was let them give, put some money on the line, knowing that they're going to take care of them. As Corporation Counsel said, we had probably upwards toward forty proposals. We have worked tirelessly for two days going through them. We have to verify that they own the property, they don't owe taxes, they don't owe the city, they don't owe C W P, they don't have housing violations, and a number of them we found have. So, there is, there was a reason behind that, and there was actually only two people that didn't submit the five hundred. We had a great response, and people were calling the five-hundred-dollar lots because they know that's a good deal for property, and it extends their value.
Alderman Redpath.
There was two mistaken properties put on the list, are they, are they been rejected?
Yes. Well, one of them never had any on there. The other one, yes, we sent back the letter today stating that it was inadvertently put on, that it shouldn't have been on the list. So, that was rejected immediately.
But doesn't the city still reserve the right to accept any bids that are submitted?
We put a minimum bid of five hundred, so it comes down to you don't meet proposal specifications. I know we did put in this RFP that as of June first, any lots that weren't open are open for two years, I think, through February twenty twenty-one. So, it leaves that opportunity open for, if they don't sell, we have the opportunity to continue to sell them, whereas in every other bid that we've put out for the RFPs hasn't had that. It used to, many years ago, it was taken out. So, after this round and we sell them, we can sell the properties that weren't sold, and that may be a possibility at that point to go back and say, we can lower it, or...
No, but simply does the city reserve the right to accept or reject any bid on the lots? That's, I mean, I don't care how long it takes them to sell, but ultimately, do you reserve the right?
The answer would be yes.
Okay, thank you. So, even though there's, I'm trying to get, even though there's a mistake, you still have the right to sell it or not sell it, correct?
Yes. This is, we have the right to reject any, all wave any irregularities, things like that. It's standard boilerplate language.
Alderman Hanauer.
And, okay, and Mayor, you just said, so are we making a limitation on these lots that people can't use them for whatever they want? So, if somebody wants to put a, try to go through the zoning process or whatever, we're saying they, they're not allowed to do that? Because you said you were checking to see if they were trying to make money off the lot or whatever. I don't...
We actually, if they have, we've come to place, have had people come to us, they want the lots to build headquarters, or they want to put their private business on it or things like that, and we tell them right now they're zoned residential. If they have any questions, we refer them straight to building and zoning, so that way they can discuss those options before they purchase a piece of property, and can't do anything with it. So, we don't tell them that, we just ask them to give us their business plan, what they would like to do, so we know, you know. We got one application that said they want to put park, or they want to park on it. They're not putting any lots on it, you know, they're not paving it, they're not putting any money, they just want to park in a grass lot across the street.
City code, anybody sold?
Right. But that's the type of things that we see when we're doing this. So, and we have to evaluate that and know what they're doing. So, we don't restrict it to just certain things, we just want to know what you're doing so we can look into it and make sure everything is okay, or tell them the right way to go to make sure they can get it done, and they don't end up with a lot that sits vacant and unkempt.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, and Val brought this to my attention today, so she can explain it better possibly, but we'll, we'll have to track this because we don't want the property falling through the cracks where it ends up where we do give it away or sell it, and then it ends up being a dilapidated property, and then Public Works has to go out, and we're chasing our tail with regards to those vacant properties. So, that's what we need to really track, who's purchasing them, what's the purpose, and making sure we're following through on the action that they said they would, at least maintaining them properly, but I don't know if Val wants to speak to that, or Cassandra.
Well, and that's one of the things that we did when we told you we did the housing checks, there was one person that bid that had fourteen violations in the last two years. So, you know, when you look at the type of violations, is that someone we want to sell one of these properties to? So, when we talk about, oh, let's just sell them for five dollars and get them off the lot, we still have to do our due diligence in making sure these people are going to take the lots, take care of them, so we're not out mowing them again, doing the fines, or end up ultimately taking them back from them and having to do the same process over. So, that's, that's what the idea was behind what we've done, and we do have evaluation pages now that we go through, and we mark off everything that's been done. We've attached pages if they've had violations, if they owe the city money, everything that's been done, we're keeping, so that way there's a paper trail for that.
Any other questions? All right, seen then. Any other new business? Alderman Thailand.
I guess this is both for Chief Winslow and Chief Rainey. The first half of the question is if someone could just kind of explain to the council what happened with the fire at Municipal Center East, and the second half of the question for Chief Rainey is, why is it that the staff noticed smoke and that's how they knew there was a fire instead of a fire alarm going off from the bathroom?
Likely the fire, I'd have to go down and look, but there probably just wasn't a detector head in there. Maybe there's a rate of rise, which means it has to get so much heat, which is what you see there. So, these, the smoke in this room will not set those off. Heat sets those off, probably because when this room was built, people still smoked. Here would be my guess.
I guess, and this is not a declaration against anything, but since we're allowing this to be a warming center, we have the public accessing this area and using these restrooms, maybe we should get a smoke detector in both restrooms, just in case. It could be something as simple as something inadvertently being, happening, somebody could have a lit cigarette and be smoking inside. There's a number of things where I think that it might be beneficial to put something besides the heat sensor in there, then.
I will, I will look, and I'll find out what's in there, and I'll shoot you an email, that'll be the easiest, but, yeah, that would not be very difficult to get something in there.
Thank you. Chief Winslow?
If you're not familiar with it, we have several people who stay in the lobby at night to warm up, et cetera, while we're trying to offer the service because of the overflow shelters being full, et cetera. This person went in there and stuffed a garbage can full of paper towels and set it on fire, so our guys smelled the smoke, came out, noticed it when they quickly put it out with a fire extinguisher. I don't think there was any real damage other than cleanup, really, and melted paper towel holder in the trash can, but, again, it's one of the things that we have as we work toward a long-term solution to homelessness as a community effort, that this really isn't the appropriate place for the women-warranty overflow shelter. We have to work as a community going forward. Fortunately, we only have another month to get through. Our guys are continuing to monitor like they've always done, and we'll deal with it, but, you know, when we had those, that many people in there, sometimes we have issues that we